Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation. Meeting is called order. Chair Naya is not present with us today. I'm Mark Lane, vice chair. And welcome all of you to a meeting that I think will be a very important one for us. I'd like to begin by calling the role. So if you would acknowledge your presence, whether in person within the Cook County Boardroom or virtually, I would appreciate that. Ex officio creditos. Commissioner Aglope. Mayor Alstary. Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Brutus. Commissioner Caliendo. Commissioner Cooley. Commissioner De Laurentis. Commissioner Duboe.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Durlough. Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Freeman.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Guajardo. Alder Person Haddon. Superintendent Killen. Thank you. Commissioner Males.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Raymer. Thank you. Commissioner Rice. Commissioner Schleiser. And Commissioner Thomas.
Apologies. Commissioner Caliendo is here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I think we will begin with public testimony. So for the record, public testimony request or any written comments can be submitted up to twenty-four hours in advance in the meeting to seventhdistrict.office@gmail.com. May I please have staff indicate whether anyone has signed up to testify in person or provide written testimony?
No public testimony at this time.
Okay, no public testimony, any written testimony?
No written testimony as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And I see Commissioner Cooley has now joined us. Thank you, Commissioner. It appears that we do not have a quorum. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That being the case, we will defer the approval of the minutes of the June meeting until August. And I'd like to now take this occasion to introduce our subject matter expert who is participating virtually. And it's really a delight to introduce him to you. Steve Ginsburg is an attorney and policy change advocate with long service to the Anti-Defamation League, both in Chicago and Connecticut. He commands the respect of both government and the business community dealing with social problems and crises rooted in bias. Hate crimes, racial profiling, and police accountability among them. And he's here to offer his advice about how Cook County can successfully spearhead a multi-sectoral anti-bias strategy. This obviously complements the work of these three of our working committees. So it's a pleasure to welcome Mr. Ginsburg here. And Steve, thanks so much for joining us. And the floor is yours.
Thanks, Emily. Mark, Elaine, and the rest of the commissioners, I really appreciate the chance to be with you here today, even though it's virtually. I wish I were home in my, where I grew up in Chicagoland, but living in Connecticut now. But thank you very much for the opportunity. And it's been a privilege to do some research and learn about the work that you're doing to make Cook County a better place to live, work, and thrive. And I hope that today we can, I guess, start a conversation that, a dialogue that hopefully some of you will be interested in continuing. I've got some ideas and proposals related to a biased strategy. But let me first just amplify a little bit about my background as it's relevant to what we're talking about today. First, let me say that the last time I've testified in front of government bodies quite a bit in my career, but is the last time I actually did it in Illinois was about twenty years ago to the day. Actually, down in Springfield, where I was sent by the governor's office like a lamb to the slaughter. And I hope that you're all a little bit more friendly than the legislature was that day. So, but it's good to be with you. And I think that the topic we're going to talk about today, you know, is a is a tough one to solve. It's one that continually evolves. And I just want to take a few minutes to describe the situation. I did submit some slides. For Chair Lane, how do you want me, do you want me to share those? Do they have them? If not, I can just walk through the, I can just walk through my presentation.
Yeah, that would be great. I think we're sharing the screen with you, Steve.
Have you seen it? Or no?
None.
Not yet, okay. While we're, while we're doing that, I guess the, the topic that I want to talk with you about today is managing bias and social crises. And as all of you know, these issues have become front and center in local communities across the country worldwide. And we are in a time of partisan politics that make these things very difficult to address. People take words that have simple meanings and expand on them to, you know, sometimes to bring people together, but more often to bring people to separate and divide. And I think that what I would love to share with you is that there are ways that we have to, that what Cook County can do at the county level is bring people together. So I worked at the Anti-Defamation League for about ten years. And while we did a lot of anti-bias education work, diversity work, work on extremism and other types of trainings, what, what I found the most rewarding is when a crisis occurred, how, how I got to work with leaders across the community from the corporate sector to the government sector, to community leaders, to grassroots activists to try to work through those problems. And the other big message that I just want to say right at the start is the times where it worked well, where, where a community could start to heal and feel united after a crisis related to bias, something like a, you know, a tragedy, like a, a situation with, like the murder of George Floyd, or something more simple, yet still troubling, like bullying in a, in a school based on race or ethnicity or religion is the, when the leaders in those communities had relationships with each other and understood their roles. Everything went better. Facts got, got collected quicker, rumors got quashed quicker, communities came together quicker. People were able to find allies and come together and, oh, sorry, that's. So that's, that's sort of the big message here is that I, I, that if we can provide, if Cook County can provide a forum to bring people together, who are the leaders in responding to these issues before the situations occur. So they know each other and know how to work with each other and know their roles. We will do a great service for the people of Cook County. We will do a great service for their actual lives and how they feel in the community, for the reputation, and I tell you, use the word brand of Cook County. But if we are leaders in this area, I think that there's, which can be done probably not with that great an expense, just taking some prioritization and getting people together. I think we'll, you'll see that we can make a big difference. So maybe we could go to the next slide. Thank you very much. So as I said, the, the role, the goal here is to empower leaders to manage incidents of racism, bias, and bigotry in a way that doesn't divide us, but heals and strengthens communities. You can go to the next one. Thanks. Thanks. You know, these are just headlines I had from something else I had prepared because over the last several years, I've been working on creating mostly in the corporate sector, crisis response plans for employers to, to work with their employees to be ready for and respond to crises. And when I say a crisis related to bias, I mean, something that happened perhaps at a company where they were accused of racism, sexism, homophobia, or other types of identity-based accusations. And also things that happen nationally. When an issue happens across the country, it doesn't mean that people in Cook County aren't impacted by it. And so corporate voices are important. And so we have been working, my firm and I have been working with companies to, to prepare them to, whenever possible, prevent those issues from occurring, but then to be prepared to respond to those situations and try to make them not the crises that they can be. So these are just some examples of the kind of things that happen around the country. And it's, you know, we've seen a dramatic rise in this. It's, it's pretty easy to understand where it comes from. As I mentioned, the partisan political nature of our country, the social media, the, the the people being quick to judge, but also people finding a voice they may never have had before and exposing bad actors has become, you know, some of these things are good. I don't want to describe them all as crisis. Sometimes good's the wrong word. They're important for the growth of our, and progress of our society. But it's important for us to understand that leaders need to under, to help their communities, whatever communities they are, understand what's happening and understand what's going to happen next. And communities are desperate and anxious for leaders to lead in these situations. What we find is, if you could go to the next slide, what we find is that leaders are usually not prepared. They're, they don't, they don't have this type of training. Actually, in the political and government realm, I think we've actually seen that some people are better prepared than in the corporate realm where they're just more focused on profit and the bottom line. But that doesn't mean that companies don't care and that there aren't great leaders who know how to find their voice and speak clearly when these issues occur. So the key is because now I'm in crisis management, what I believe the key is, and what we've seen is the key is to engage with your stakeholders and understand them. When I say stakeholders, what do I mean by that? In a corporate situation, it's not just your customers or your shareholders, it's your suppliers, your vendors, the media, all these people who are watching in the government context, in the, in a, in a school environment. In a community at large, there are many different stakeholders who don't all think the same. They might many pull the same lever in the bell box, but that doesn't mean they think the same about everything. And the best leaders are the ones who do the best to listen with empathy to the people in their community that they are representing and trying to lead. And the key then is to be ready to respond swiftly, clearly, and appropriately to communicate everything you can. Use the resources at your disposal, know the community groups and, and experts in the area that's relevant to the situation and be as accurate and authentic as you can be when you speak or when you write, or when you have allies or people from your organization speak on your behalf. They should do their best to understand the communities that they're talking to and represent them. So and the best types of responses are the ones that set the community on a path for healing. So, okay, we can go to the next, next slide. So as we decided, as we said, a bias situation can, you know, can happen anywhere and can become a crisis that really impacts a community and the reputations, relationships of people living there in that community. What I, if you could go to the next one, thank you very much. The problem's pretty clear. I don't think I need to go much further with that. And then we can get to questions after I make my modest proposal. The goal would be to help the leaders across multi, multi-sector, cross-disciplinary know the best practices and know each other. So that when there's an incident anywhere in the area, you understand how it might impact the people who live in your town or city. So that you know how the, you know, what that, how a company might respond, how a government official might respond, how a school leader might respond, law enforcement might respond. All these things, the more that we know each other and the more that people are trained to prepare, the better it is for our community. Okay, so, and the, and the better prepared you are, the better you can manage to, to get. So, so let's go to the next one where I can share my proposal. So I believe that the best thing to do, and whether it's done in a very large group or in a, in smaller region, regional approaches, is to convene people from across the public, corporate, and social sectors, leaders across Cook County to develop a plan, almost like a playbook that they can execute on as the team of leaders when a crisis occurs. And there might be situations where it's not relevant to you or your community as a leader. But there might be ones where you do, where you can play a role. And what we would do, because what I, what we've done with our clients and what I've seen the effective is hypothetical situations. Take an example from another city, a town, and live through it and play it out of how it would have, how it would work in Cook County. Or in a specific city or town. And when you do that, when you do those reps, when you do that practice, you understand, you learn the many different elements of appropriate crisis response. Because the trick of appropriate crisis response is not just to jump right to, right to Twitter, but to think about what the right way to communicate is and what the message is to communicate. Sometimes you don't have a lot of time to think. So when you're ready beforehand for something that could happen, you can go into action more quickly. So those, that, you know, I'm thinking of examples in other cities where like Los Angeles earlier this year or last year, where there was a situation at the, you know, the city council, I don't know if you saw the city council member whose conversation was taped and she used racial epithets and ethnic slurs. I think that there was a swift reaction, but it wasn't necessarily a coordinated reaction. Corporate situations like, you know, Bud Light, right? I don't know if you follow that situation earlier this year, but a, you know, what became, what for them was more of a marketing challenge for people who are impacted by that issue. They would like to know that their neighbors, their community leaders are on their side. And when I say side, what I mean by that is because there are lots of different sides to these issues, side doesn't mean left or right, side doesn't mean Democrat or Republican, side doesn't mean, you know, those polarizing terms. Side means we hear you and we understand how you feel through this situation and we got you back. And that can be a great role for a, a government body and the people, and the many resources in our community to, to marshal in these situations. So I'm going to stop there and I'd love to take any questions. I'm also happy to amplify on any particular situations or, or anything that came up today or, or not. Or things that you just have on your mind on this topic, because I think it really is a dialogue. I don't live in Cook County anymore. And so obviously for anything like this to work, we need to have to be really curated and catered to the people of Cook County and the, and the leaders there.
Appreciate that, Steve. Thank you. Any questions or comments by any of the commissioners, please? Let me make a couple of observations while people are gathering their thoughts here. One is, although the commission is often described as an incubator of actionable social policy recommendations for the Cook County Board, it has performed other functions, including serving as a convener and collectively their catalyst. One example that comes to mind that I think is analogous here to the opportunity that Mr. Ginsburg presents is the effort that the commission spearheaded, spearheaded a couple of years ago to bring together stakeholders around an initiative to facilitate succession planning for manufacturing concerns within the county so that people of color and women could acquire manufacturing companies from generally white male entrepreneurs so as to create entrepreneurship within disinvested communities and the improvement of employment and contributions to the tax base. I believe we had something over a hundred different stakeholders attend and convening around that effort. And it became a driver of that initiative that was carried on thereafter by government as well as nonprofit community. So I think we do potentially have a role in bringing together stakeholders around bias, especially since many of the issues that we are focusing on have been created by virtue of institutional racism. So the second point that I would raise is that as we look at the three most active working groups, the one relating to public safety and community wellness, the one relating to the creation of public owned businesses in disinvested communities, and the one related to community investment vehicles, I think all of them really are could be refrains to include addressing in a proactive way problems of bias and and racism, particularly in the most segregated city in the country. So I raised that for the commissioners' consideration. In the meantime, are there questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Anything on the line? Who do we have?
Mr. Howard Mann.
Oh, Commissioner Males, if you'd be so kind.
Oh, thank you, Mark. And Steve, thank you so much for your presentation. I was reflecting as you were talking about the nature of crises and the inability to control whether one comes at you or two. I remember a professor posing a question in one of my classes where he asked if a person would duck as quickly for one ball as he would or she would for two balls. And I think three and four balls, at least when you're in government, these things come at you. And how do you see, for example, prioritizing crises? Where should that occur? And I, I want to just make this priority question, not specific, but one could have foreseen what was going to happen at Northwestern University with respect to their sports program. And not necessarily, you know, all, all the things that go on in, in, in terms of what we do. I'm sorry, I just got an alert. The, the thing about how things tend to grow and one ball gets you two and then, and then four and five. How does one prioritize a crisis or a series of crises?
Great. Thank you for that question. So, you know, when we build these, when we get hired to work with entities to build these crisis preparedness manuals, we do start with the ones that are the most likely to happen and the ones that are the most likely to have the biggest impact on a community. For example, you know, when we're, this is not analogous to the situation, other than, I'm sure you're setting many priorities at the county level, right? Certain issues like when we work with a utility company, like, you know, power outages are going to be a crisis, right? That's an easy one to identify as a crisis. And that's a very top priority. I think that, you know, in this situation, I would probably look at it because there might be crisis response manuals for many different types of things that hit the county. I think those probably exist, natural disasters, other types of violent, violence and things that occur. Today, I'm really talking about issues related to identity, bias, bullying, hate crimes, I guess, to the extent there's something criminal. And the way I would prioritize them is sort of anticipated numbers of impacted people and how deep that impact is on those people. So I hate to be the one setting relative value to these things, but name-calling is not as bad or as important to focus on as a violent hate crime. And so when I worked at the Anti-Defamation League, we had something we used as a rubric called the Pyramid of Hate. And it started with things like bias at the bottom and name-calling and stereotyping. And it worked its way up to more violent crime and then to genocide at the top, right? We're hopefully very far away from that, but as I look at it, it's how deeply and how broadly the impact would be. And if we were to run through scenarios, I think that we probably have things like hate crimes, discrimination claims, bullying, and then really look to the community to help prioritize what they think the biggest problem should be.
Thank you so much, Steve. I appreciate that response. Very helpful.
Commissioner Freeman, I believe you have a comment or question?
I, I do have a question. And I guess it's more in response to the things that are, we would consider like invisible. Because discrimination isn't always in the form of a violent hate crime, but it is in restrictive lending practices or in the case of like a lot of the real estate projects that we're currently working on and that we help clients through. They have experienced a level of discrimination, but there's not something that's explicitly tangible about it. It's just extremely anecdotal. When you talk to other business owners that are not women or that are not Black, the ease of being able to navigate some of these things is very different. And so we continue to operate in spaces where some of these things are invisible. So is, is what you're proposing helping to address those things? Or does it have to be something, again, going back to the Northwestern example, something that has like recorded instances of where these, these things have occurred?
So that is a great question. And I, you know, we'll probably, we can explore all these things. Let me give you my initial response to that. What I was really thinking about today is when, you know, when there is a public media-based crisis based on a pattern of behavior that's been exposed and factually shown and the public is pretty clearly getting the message almost every day, you know, every minute in their, in their feed, right? And, and so in some ways, crisis management in that regard is not to, not to minimize anger, but to channel the efforts to make positive change. And sometimes that means someone's got to get fired. Sometimes that means someone's got to, you know, get sued or get criminally indicted, right? Those, those are the types of things I was talking about. But your question opens up a really, that flip is another part of the work that we do and that I've done at our firm, which is when you take those types of issues that you're talking about, those sort of structural hidden, invisible or ignored problems and shine some light on. And I don't know the, the remit of the commission in this area, but let me just give a couple of examples that I've worked on in the last couple of years where I could see doing this kind of work at the Cook County level. So let me give you three examples, actually. One quickly was a, a house of worship in a town here in Connecticut that was trying to purchase a, a piece of land. And the neighbors basically went to zoning board and said, not in my backyard. And we had to launch a campaign to make it pretty clear that the neighbors, while they were pretty smart about how they made their case, were saying, we don't want that type of group in our backyard. So it was teaching that particular client, in that case, not a town, but we did have to work with the town to, to support our client to show how the sort of ostensible, you know, that type of activity shouldn't happen on that piece of property was total BS and based on a bias. Another example where we sort of took a more proactive approach with a, a goal in mind was our firm actually represented the two men, or one man and, and his, his family. was our firm actually represented the two men, or one man and his his family who were wrongfully convicted of and served 20 years in prison for the murder of Malcolm X. So I don't know if you remember, but a couple of years ago, they were exonerated. And our job was to point out how their case was an example of horrible police misconduct. And so that was sort of tying into the message happening nationally and and doing and and making that case on the front page of the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal. And we did it very actively, pointing, you know, pointing fingers at the people who were the bad actors. The third example is possibly something that could could happen. I don't, you know, in 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 Cook County, we represented the Robinson family, Kelly and Craig Robinson. It's actually Craig is is Michelle Obama's former first lady, Michelle Obama's brother. He and his wife Kelly sued their son's private school, former private school outside was outside Milwaukee because the family was basically told not to come back to the school because they started raising concerns for the school about their failure to address microaggressions and other types of more subtle racism at the school. And so there was a situation where we helped them rally the community by building a website, getting government officials and local community members to put pressure on an entity that was getting away with. And so those are a few ways that you could sort of flip the script and be more proactive. And and I'm happy to talk with you further about that, if that's interesting. Because there's no reason we can't be seeing, trying to expose those things that are happening behind the scenes or invisibly.
Thank you. Very interesting. Commissioner Raymer, please.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. Can you elaborate a bit on when it's at Cook County or a company or whatever? You know, I mean, there's lots of things going on. And how do you determine which ones you're going to proactively respond to that necessarily didn't happen in your house? You know, like your company or whatever, but your societal issue or incident that happened versus when you just let it play out and not make that say things? You know, a lot of companies are are trying to walk that line of like, you can't respond to everything that happens. How do you decide which ones to correctly say, we know this issue happened? And we just start standing and reiterating your values or whatever. And, you know, Cook County, right? I mean, a lot of things happen in Cook County. When when would Cook County, you know, I mean, you go to examples, you compelled the government, you had a thing, and then they responded to that and got involved. When would you advise somebody to either one leading that rather than joining in with something? That an outside company or agency like yours is coordinating? Wouldn't be proactive, wouldn't be reactive?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep. So that's a great question. And you sort of you sort of hit on it. It's like, it's knowing your key stakeholder group and what they want you to do. Right? Not that you don't, not that you're purely reactive to your key stakeholders, but in the corporate setting, right? You you turn to your values, if you have, if you've established corporate values and you say, is this a situation where we are going to be proactive or reactive, right? In the in the government context, it's, first of all, I think in many ways, it's a lot more complicated. I think that, listen, right, we have admitted, you know, government administrations that are there to represent everyone, not just their employees and not just the people who elected them. We have politicians who want to get reelected and are speaking sometimes to their particular base. And it's a very dicey question about when you jump in on a social issue. Social issues are happening, like going back to the, I think it was power, like those balls are in the air every minute. Here's what we tend to advise, right? It's, it really depends on, and I'm going to say this in a sort of crass corporate way for the moment. And I please, I know I know that it might not be purely applicable, and that's where we need to keep exploring this. It's kind of about your brand. It's who do you want to be? Who do you want people to see you as? And how do you want people to feel about you? Right? So in a, in a, you know, in a corporate context, it's it's easy, it's in some ways, I guess it's could be harder or easier, but we always try to figure out what the identity of the organization that we're representing is. Sometimes that's an individual. Sometimes that's a government entity, and sometimes it's a corporation. We've represented. And so when you, when you're seeing these issues that you can weigh in on, there's a, we actually, we've developed a kind of rubric of like, here's how you make those decisions. And the key, I would say, before you make a decision on that is to have the right people with the right expertise and and understanding. And frankly, a wide range of opinion in the room before you make the decision. Not everybody's going to be on board, but the key is to show that you included people in that decision. The key is to know that you actually took in all the opinions, all the facts and opinions that you needed to. And then you only then you make a decision about whether to weigh in. Sometimes the timeframe's really short, and that's why I'm advocating that you kind of got to identify who your team is before the problem happens. Does that answer the question? It's, I know I'm.
Yeah, I'm not really helpful. I mean, even nonprofits and, you know, the mission aligns with, you know, a certain thing. It's, you know, an incident happens, you know, how do you react to it? Do you want to react to it? I think it's, you know, you add to the voices, you advocate that kind of thing. So.
Can I can I give an example just from my nonprofit background about that? Is that that's okay? So when I worked at the Anti-Defamation League, the ADL is a Jewish-formed and primarily Jewish-led organization that fights antisemitism and all kinds of hate. And what, but we, they, we also worked a lot on civil rights issues that have nothing to do with directly anything related to Judaism or antisemitism. And there were probably every month questions about whether ADL, whether it was an ADL issue, right? Is women's reproductive rights an ADL issue? Is gun control an ADL issue? And, you know, I was in those rooms sometimes, sometimes I wasn't, sometimes I agreed with those decisions, sometimes I didn't. You're never going to hit the mark exactly, because when you have a broad enough base of support, you're going to, some people are going to be upset with what you do, especially when you're trying to be bipartisan. But it was a, it's a very challenging process. Your question, I, you know, there is no silver bullet on these issues. But the best you can do is have a thoughtful process and get the right people in the room to make the decision.
Do we have other commissioners who would like to comment? Commissioner Elston, and let's let the record reflect that he has arrived. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. The question I had really beggled to your point about leaders needing to be prepared to set the community on a path to give, you know, much of what, based on the standard your presentation speaks about a preparedness mindset, manual and cohesive team to either get out in front of an incident or respond to an incident. But after that immediate time in the spotlight, there is that path to reconciliation. And he, I'd like to hear you speak more to that aspect of of his work.
Thank you. I couldn't have written a question left there. So, so, and I hate to tap back into my ADL experience again. And if we move forward, I would, you know, to the extent it's relevant, we would, we should bring them in for their expertise in some of these areas. But the way we always saw it at ADL was that, and I'll use like a a K through 12 school example for you, like, right? We used to do a ton of anti-bias and diversity trainings at school. And we always tried to get them into the school before the big problem happened, right? Or at least, I'm sure problems happen all the time before they, before it became a media and reputation problem for the school. But most of the time, we wanted people to see the light. Most of the time, they they brought us in after they felt the heat. Right? They, the 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 need to do this is only after you've had a crisis. That's what people feel because they de-prioritize these issues. But your question is the perfect one, which is regardless of whether you see the light or whether you felt the heat and had to go through the crisis. The key is how you come out of it and how you learn from it and how you, not as as a leader, try to prevent it from happening again and do that by taking the steps you probably should have taken before and really learning and listening from the people who are impacted by it. Those are the voices you're probably not listening to, or you would have been able to prevent it. And so there's after the crisis, right? After the crisis calms down. That's when you probably, in these areas, need to find the resources for continuing conversations, continuing to bring people together, much more learning about about DEI-related concepts and topics and how people feel about these things. And taking aside the word DEI for the moment, or the acronym DEI, just the the social crises and how people in your community are feeling about it, listening sessions. And I'll give you the the best thing that I, that that worked for the the leaders that I worked with who became real good. Is they developed relationships with people who were not, they they worked with people, they worked with people who were their peers. But they also worked with people who were not in the role that they were in. The best school superintendents I saw know the clergy in their town very well and meet with them on a regular basis. They know what's on their mind before something happens. They meet with the the local NAACP or other advocacy groups. They meet with the with the with their counterparts in law enforcement, their counterparts for people who are unhoused, like all these people, they are meeting constantly when there isn't a problem. And that is what, how they handle those problems better because their team is built. Is that giving off sort of?
I certainly think that addresses the larger issue of the ongoing work, but then sort of sets up the question as this commission, what is it that we might begin to think about recommending to count and counter government and other stakeholders in terms of preparing for the ongoing work, not just chaffing down the country?
Yeah. But there's there's something about the the way that I, you know, I guess talked about this earlier that just sort of feels like crisis management, which doesn't, which really doesn't get to the root of the problem. But my belief is that if you, if the right types of steps are taken, and we can talk about, you know, specific, more other specific recommendations other than just like meeting about a crisis. I, but I think you'd need to bring in other resources to that, to to that process. And I think that's where the the great role you can play is is convener of the right groups to talk about sort of the long-term strategy.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any comment or question? Yes, please.
Hi, just a question. I'm trying to understand what we can do as a commission to support.
What you can ask, I I would propose that the commission ask Cook County to explore convene, a convening of leaders from across different sectors to come together to talk about how to prevent, prepare for, and address bias crises when they happen. Through creating a networked group of people who learn best practices, learn how to work with each other and are ready to respond to these issues when they happen.
Steve, may I build on the, you know, there are some things the commission can do on its own. Other things would take the form of a ordinance or a resolution to put before the county board. If we're talking about a convening, which may be catalytic, but not the end-all and be-all, the problem obviously has many parts. And the solution probably also has many parts. But if we had talked about a convening to engender awareness within the necessary desirable stakeholders and have an appropriate approach to curation and education within such a session, that may be within the reach of the commission itself. If we're talking about a more continuing effort with significant budgets, bringing in expertise of various sorts, you know, we get to a point where that's beyond the commission's capacity, if not its mandate. And we now are talking about making a recommendation to the county board. So I guess this translates to a question for you, and that is, if we kind of prioritize in sequence, one foot in front of another, where do we begin? How do you see this taking shape? And I'm asking it through the lens of, might that be something the commission can undertake on its own? Or is even that a bridge too far for a group of this nature? And might we be looking at creating an ordinance for the county board's consideration?
So it really depends on how much ambition and long-term yet like look you have before you put your toe in the water. To me, I would, I would start at the commit, by the, with the commission, convening the leaders. Hopefully, you can get the imprimatur and support of the of the county and others. But what I, what I, when I've, when I've planned and executed sort of learning sessions like this, the way I see it is whether it it could be a day. And in the morning, you have all the people, you know, people from, you know, everybody from Oak Park is sitting there together. The chief of police, the superintendent, the member of the clergy, a member of the media, they're learning about working with each other. And and then in the afternoon, you've got all the, or maybe you flip it in the, in you, and then you, the other part of the day, you have all the members of the media talking about the role they play. Then superintendent's talking about the role they play, mayor's talking about the role they play, right? Guided by experts in these fields, teaching that, delivering information, running them through scenarios and getting them to work with each other. And from a, you know, just from an, you know, how to coordinate and fund this, at least in my experience, this has been something that the corporate and foundation world has been, you know, ready to support because they see the benefit for the broader community. And so from a funding perspective, it does seem like you could, it it seems attainable to to do that.
Okay. And let me just add on to that, and I think that makes perfect sense. You, in our prior conversations, have graciously consented to work collaboratively with the commission as we begin to launch this process. And I appreciate that, speaking on behalf of everyone assembled. But you've also, I think realistically indicated that this sort of an effort requires curation and influence by a variety of different kinds of experts. Where bias may manifest itself in different settings and different ways and different kinds of players may have experience and will have expertise to kind of guide the conversation and start offering up approaches to solutions. Would you be willing to work with the commission to start to map out what that might look like, even start to identify what kinds of talent we might recruit so that we can have to leverage your very significant expertise in this field to avoid unnecessary? to avoid unnecessary missteps as we move forward on this agenda?
Yes, and yes, and yes to everything I I.
These are all already asked, so there's nothing left to do. Are there other questions or comments by any of the commissioners? Steve, I'm gonna I'm gonna thank you and let you know that your contribution today has only invited us to take unfair advantage of you going forward. And we appreciate that opportunity. You've been you've been inspiring. Some of what you said is pretty scary. But by the only way you can solve a problem is by identifying it in the first instance and committing to tackle it. And so today, this journey of a thousand miles begins with today's first step, and we're grateful to you. We're lucky to have you stick around if you if your schedule permits, but we're actually going to move on to some other business and other business may in fact, in fact, I have reason to believe will in fact include at least some consideration of what you've offered up today, but in the context of our pre-existing working groups where I see, as I've already indicated, a nexus to what you are you're guiding us about. So stick around if you're if you're able, and if not, we'll understand. But in any event, we we deeply appreciate your contributions today. So thank you so much for being with us.
And 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 thank you, Mark, for the chance and to all the commissioners for your time and great questions. And I look forward to continuing the conversation, hope I can help and it's we can try something innovative.
Yeah, and the other thing I should mention to you, which I haven't mentioned yet, is one of the other roles that the commission sees itself as playing is leveraging its thought leadership. So that which we do can be picked up by other government units around the country and follow suit. So although obviously our our principal mandate is to address social problems effectively and properly, what we do does not go unnoticed. So we see our work as really having significant positive extrinuity. So in that context too, it's important to continue to get your insight and your contribution. So thank you again.
Well, but by the way, one thing about this, Mark, just is it's very clear that if something happens out of this, we need to promote that it's happening for the good of everyone, so they know it's happening because it makes people in the community feel good, that their leaders are focusing on these issues. And for the good of Cook County writ large with respect to its brand and reputation. So I think you've got a chance to really lead here nationally and do a great service locally.
All true, and in so doing, to the extent that we are educating a broader group of constituencies, that too may entice some business participation in in hosting the initial event, for example, we've had that is the way things materialized last time out. So thank you again. I'm gonna move on to our our working groups now. And in so doing, in addition to inviting the chairs of the working groups to fill the commission in on your progress, I would also ask, and this may be premature, and if so, you're invited to reflect on it. But if you see room within your working group to take on a piece of what Mr. Ginsburg has presented today, I think it I think his work is does reinforce and is complementary to the goals of each of the three working groups I'm going to be identifying. And to the extent you, you know, want to grab a piece of that for your working group, I would not discourage you. So let me begin by asking Chair Austin and Commissioner Debo of the Public Safety and Community Wellness Working Group to update us on their progress. And again, if you have any comments with respect to an anti-bias strategy in that effort, we'd love to hear that too.
At this point, I don't have anything to offer. Words of girth though, that I think anti-bias words is inherent in the work of public safety and community.
Yeah, I agree with you entirely. Commissioner Debo, you have anything to add? I thought she was here. Yes. She muted?
Can you can you hear me? Sorry for the delay.
We hear you now. Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, you know, I just want to thank you for that great presentation and the perspective, you know, I think you know, Harry and I should think on it. I one and one initial thought might be that, you know, this partnership that we're trying to create with the hospital and the foundation, you know, I maybe in this work that we're doing and trying to really make sure that all the resources are in the trauma center and connected to community in the most meaningful way as folks that are, you know, involved in the cycle of violence are in the hospital and then leave the hospital, go back to the community. You know, one thing would be for us to try to make sure that the trauma center, the hospital has all the resources that they need and the approaches that were discussed today in the way they're, you know, trying to eliminate bias. And so it's kind of maybe one handy thing to sort of fold into the conversation that we're going to have and and the resources. And if, you know, I think one of our goals in that is to try to leverage foundation resources, either the the hospital foundation resources or other resources to try to get this more maximized case management, you know, work that that continues with people after they leave the hospital and go back into community is, you know, is is anti-bias training competency, you know, all the methods that were discussed today, are they sort of fully fully implemented? Is that something that we could kind of, you know, just do a have a conversation about, take a look at, you know, in what we're doing? Just just one thought.
Very much appreciated. Yeah. Commissioner Debo, did you want to fill us in on any progress of the working groups since the last time we've all convened, or would you like to?
Yeah, I, you know, like Harry, I don't have a lot, you know, I still, we still do not have a date from Sylvia, who's been, you know, working with Letty, unless I don't know, Mark, if if she communicated with you. I did on another matter, I was communicating with her and the board chair of the foundation and sort of put in a little nudge to, you know, say, hey, I hope we can get that scheduled pretty quickly because it it they're starting, the foundation itself is starting to communicate about the work that they're trying to do on public safety. So I thought it was kind of a nice chance to say, hey, you know, we want to get this together. So I have not heard anything, you know. The last we knew, I think that this was supposed to take place in July, but we don't have dates yet. So, you know, I'm still waiting and I don't know if you have any other ideas or thoughts, but as I know more, I can share more.
Yeah, no, I think I think you described it accurately. So hopefully by the time we meet again next month, we'll have significant progress in that project. I know we're at the mercy of Cook County Health and the Cook County Health Foundation in terms of enraging this this meeting. So.
Maybe I'll just, you know, loop back with Sylvia again and say, we're hoping to be able to report something, you know, at the next meeting a month from now. So see if that kind of gets it moving.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yes, please.
Really just a comment. Steve, thank you very much for that presentation. And Wendy, I've heard some things you mentioned, some with your coordination with the hospital system. So part of this, you know, the recommendation is to develop a crisis or a bias and social crisis response plan. So Anna, the member of the Cook County Government Team, I think it's we need to acknowledge the issues that we are trying to address, but also look at how we are setting ourselves up on a daily basis, not just here's your plan for mitigation. For but, you know, or to respond, but what is our path for mitigation? So therefore, I say, what are we doing to ensure that we don't end up in that spot? So I think acknowledging, you know, generational diversity training, unintended bias training, you know, really focusing on inclusivity and gender neutral language, looking at how certain ethnic groups get categorized, you know, in certain data points and metrics, really looking at ways where some of our day to day might be viewed as, you know, exclusionary and using gendered faces for how we then want to go.
Yeah.
Not just respond to, but what can we do internally to help mitigate or avoid some of these to happen, really to put the county on stronger ground that should there be you know, an issue or incident that requires response, you know, we can feel confident in that level of engagement. So I think there's really always going to be two sides.
I think that's extremely important. It's, thank you for that contribution. Steve, do you have a comment on that? Is he still with us? Is he with us?
Still. And yes, so right, the the data, the research, the education are sort of the the baseline for any to to understand how what the situation really is and how you need to respond when something happens. And so it's it's all part of a large anti-bias strategy. We're just, it's, you know, it's I guess what I was what I was focused on today was more the your hair's on fire and your company's getting losing customers or your reputation's a problem, right? Though and and in some ways, those are those are those are business problems, but they're also people problems. But I think that without the the baseline of information, right, collecting information, understanding the situation is 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 just as important, frankly, to to making to making long term change. It's just sometimes you get people's attention, especially corporate attention, when you're focused on a crisis.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Let's move on to the Community Owned Assets Working Group, previously known as the Industrial Policy Working Group, but which is now expanded its jurisdiction. Commissioner Cooling, Commissioner Thomas in giving us your report, as I hope you will. I'd also welcome any comments you might have about today's presentation and how that might be built into your work. Thank you.
Looking on setting up kind of a different commission of plans. And her team, I remember her team, that's the different directors, the development policy to start exploring what the potential for the senior assets work would look like for the economic development. Part of the Cook County, so kind of testing the ideas there and seeing where we start looking at the next steps or cost of recommendation. Excited to see in Mayor Johnson's transition report that they are going to be supportive of a public bank. Highlighted that directly. So interested in build connections and starting to reach out to the mayor's office to see who disappoints person there, the teachers and bridges and they could join the conversation to accelerate the conversation. Commissioner Thomas is working on recruiting Ken Leonard, who works with, is an officer of Hope Brothers Foundation, a potential partner as well in the conversation. And then looking at for the fall meeting, having that one of the fall meetings for the commission, one of a representative of both from Los Angeles to New York who have past ordinances around instituting a public banker in the process of setting up that.
Yes, that's right.
The thanks to that staff.
Yeah, thank you for that. I should mention to the commission that I I put out a general call to a couple of the commissioners, inviting them to suggest subject matter experts to testify in some of our future meetings. And I had been overwhelmed in talents that is available to us and the interest in our work, which I think underscores the notion that people are looking at us and learning from us and modeling their behavior after hours. So I think all the commissioners should derive satisfaction from that. So so thank you for that, Commissioner Cooling. I don't know if you specifically touched on the anti-bias piece of this.
No, not yet.
Okay, please, if you wish to.
I think it's, you know, kind of it underlies a lot of the assumptions for why we started this committee. Recognizing that corporate players and other entities have not have under invested in the community, that's why we're talking about needing to fill in the gaps with public assets. You know, the underbanking, massive issues with access to grocery and food retail, in some cases now pharmacies. You know, these corporate entities come into these spaces and vacate it then or have left it for generations at this point. So there's a massive amount of bias that's taking place, so kind of fit for why we're even moving to this space. So I think that would certainly be part of conversation for why we're doing this work and how to some of the solutions that are coming up would need to be resident with those communities.
Very much appreciate that. Thank you. And then let's move on to the Community Investment Vehicle Working Group. Commissioners Freeman and Raymer, if you would kindly listen on your progress. And again, to the extent you'd like to incorporate it to your presentation, any of what you've learned today or thought about interaction with bias, welcome there as well.
Okay, good afternoon again. First, I'll start with a second question first. I do think that there would be an opportunity or an overlap with Steve's work, particularly as we are we have to continue to interface with traditional lending structures, municipalities, and many of these community investment vehicles are being introduced and piloted in neighborhoods that have been otherwise devoid of extensive economic development and economic justice. So there continues to be bias at a variety of levels from traditional lending institutions to philanthropy to alternative lenders. That is really continuing to be faced as we are pushing through the C I V work. From the standpoint of updates, we have not had an additional working group meeting, but there has been additional coordination with some of the other working groups that are happening with C I V work with the city. So trying to still make sure that we are piggybacking off of some of the momentum that is happening. So Garfield Park, South Shore, Inglewood, Woodlawn. And while these are predominantly within the city limits, a few of them are still engaging with the county, particularly around the acquisition of Cook County Land Bank properties. So I think that will continue to be a very important lever to try to create longer term sustainable change around. And so those are all the updates that I currently have. Wendy, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, thanks for covering up on that, Kristen. You know, as we move forward with kind of realizing a pilot or, you know, next steps that are solid. I liked this presentation today because this type of work really does intersect with community, with government, with public and private. And I don't know, one of the things that Steve, you know, that's going around my mind and all this kind of stuff, I mean, the county is huge. So like who are the people in what room, when? But as we move forward with this initiative, like this could be absolutely an element of like as we're gathering people to talk about. Because wherever there's money spent or competitive or or things moving or changing in communities, even overall that they are good, it's still change. So, you know, being able to have your heart members solid, on the same page with your, I don't know, having your shopping points to your priorities, to your values is is really critical. So appreciate the contact. It's applicable to a lot of different things.
Well, thanks to Commissioner Raymer as well. I I I would like to raise a related point. It it appears that each of the working groups recognizes the cross currents here as it relates to bias. And to fulfill the mission of each working group, biases need to be taken into. And to fulfill the mission of each working group, bias needs to be taken into account. We need to be mindful of how, how bias can be addressed within the industry context, but also more broadly. So all of the working groups have kind of taken a preliminary take on how anti-bias work might fit into their, their specific areas. I'm wondering whether any one of the Commissioners might want to kind of take charge of the broader picture. You know, as Wendy points out, there are questions, who should be in what room, when? How do we identify appropriate stakeholders? There will be collaboration with Mr. Ginsburg and others about what expertines would they want to bring to bear, you know, with kind of funding? Are we gonna secure for, if there is to be an initial funding conference around these topics, for example? Is there some of them who would be interested in kind of leading the charge and perhaps helping coordinate the other working groups efforts as they relate to bias? But also perhaps undertaking the creation of a working group of Commissioners who are specifically interested in an anti-bias strategy and kind of developing an agenda unto itself. And I'll leave that question open, if anyone, you know, responds during the session, that would be great. But upon reflection, if any of you might be willing to take that on, please reach out to me, you know. I, I would very much appreciate that and, you know, provide whatever resources are available to, to make that a reality too. Because I think that would be a, a very appropriate topic for its own working group and in concert with the efforts of the other working groups. Apart from that, I will. That's the General and Commission to take this opportunity to do so. Any, any, any news, any updates, any sneak previews on coming events, please?
So we can't share all of the details just yet, but Department of Transportation and Highway here at the county will be bringing to our Board another annual recommendation for our Invest in Cook Program. And what that is, is an annual program where Cook County partners with local municipalities to advance priority transportation projects, where they focus on equity. So we do direct a large number of our resources to high-needs communities and those that don't have the capacity perhaps to advance these projects on their own. So I'm excited to say that we are bringing these to the Board, though it's just how we continue to engage with our communities and try to build capacity so that we can work with them to identify what their needs are and help them secure funding. Because we know that infrastructure is the backbone of community development. We do keep that in mind as we make our product selections.
Well, thank you so much, very important updates. And we look forward to news as it becomes available to us. And in the meantime, if the Commission can help in any way in advancing that agenda, we'd love to. So thanks for sharing that. Any other updates that any of the Commissioners would like to share? Or any other new business to come before the Commission? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion? Thank you, and is there a second? Thank you.
Second.
There, there's a rush to seconds, and we appreciate the enthusiasm. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, I would be very surprised. You may say no, I don't hear that at all. So we stand adjourned and thank you for what has been an extraordinarily impactful meeting. And we appreciate your continuing effort, each and every one of you, and Steve particularly you. So onward and upward, all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.